The meeting to order at six o'clock. I would ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing.
The following Dayton residents have passed since our last meeting. William Emes, 66, of Dayton. He was married for 44 years and was an applications engineer. Carrie Steele, 39 years old, of North Dayton. She was married for nine years and was a devoted mother and had a background in graphic design. James Volley, 76 years old, of Dayton. Mr. Volley was a retired plumber and sister to Janet Calatoni of Dayton. And former superintendent of the Dayton Rehoboth Public Schools, Dr. Russell Latham, 81 years old. He was also Dayton's first special educator and was the Dayton's, Dayton Rehoboth's first special education director. Our sincere condolences go out to their families. And could we have a moment of silence at this time?
Thank you. So this is a hybrid meeting, which means that we're in person. Slakman-Hull is present. Dr. Z is present. Ken Pacheco is present. It's also, we have people that are on Zoom also. If anybody who is on cable watching this live and they want to participate via Zoom, let me give you the meeting ID number, which is 832-3701-0116. I'll repeat that. The meeting ID number is 832-3701-0116. And the passcode is 561193. I'll repeat the passcode. Passcode is 561193. Thank you. The first agenda item is scheduled appointments. And Theodore Conti is present. He's the one that has done the Eagle Project next door at the James Briggs Garden. He made two raised beds for those that are disabled. And I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to view those raised beds. They're an excellent job you did, Theodore. So why don't you come up here? Tell us a little bit about your project that you did.
Hi. So I did, created two ADA compliant raised garden beds for the garden right next to the town hall. I, I, so yeah, I did that. And yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So the, we, we met a couple of weeks ago and we met with the ADA coordinator who made sure that they were compliant with ADA requirements. And clearly he supported that and he felt that they were, they were great. They're right next to the BP's shed that they made for us. And we'll have mats placed down once the ADA coordinator orders those mats put down around those beds so that people in wheelchairs or whatever walk up, will have a stable ground to work on. He's put all natural preservative on them, so hopefully they're going to last for a few years. He got some wood that's two inches thick, so hopefully it's going to be around for a while. It's what, 30 inches?
Yes, 30 inches high.
And it's, the width of the, around the beds is?
Those are eight inches wide.
Yeah. So someone with a wheelchair can actually go there and weed or plant or pick vegetables. So this community, this is not a community garden. This is a garden that a bunch of volunteers as well as scouts are going to be doing the work. And what they're going to do with the vegetables that they gain, get from this and eventually some flowers, they're going to give to the food bank that we have monthly in Dayton as well as Lincoln Village. So it's, it's a great, a great thing that's going on next door. I want to thank you so much for what you've done. It's an accomplishment. He had to do it by his birthday and I think you did it maybe a couple of weeks prior to it. And other scouts assisted you on this, if I remember correctly.
Yes, they did.
So it was a great job. I would urge the members of the board to take a look at them. And I believe in a couple of weeks, we may be putting some manure there. So if you want to volunteer to help shovel some manure, it will be filling the beds. And hopefully it's nice fresh manure, so doesn't impact town hall next door as far as the order goes. So it's a great opportunity and the town appreciates it. So if the board can make a motion to accept his Eagle Project, I would appreciate it.
Okay. I have a question first.
Sure.
My question is, would you have done anything differently with the project?
Um, I don't think I would have done anything differently. I liked how it came together. It didn't take very long and I was well organized with scheduling, scheduling things I had to do with it.
Nice.
Yeah, Slakman-Hull?
Mr. Conti?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Is this the last step before you go before the honor, of the code of, code of honor?
Yeah, this is finishing my project and then finishing last touches and then I'll send it and then do my board of review with scouts.
Are there any obstacles that we as a board can help you overcome so that you are successful?
Um, not as, not of right now, no.
Excellent. Excellent. I wish you the best.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just have to sign.
That's important.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. So my beneficiary name is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we authorize you to sign the document.
Should I stop?
No, it's okay. Only if, only if you didn't want to sign it. To accept, no, that's not the wording. What is the wording? We usually get a thing that has the wording for this, the motion that's needed.
To accept the Eagle Project, motion to, for the town to accept the Eagle Project for the James Briggs Garden.
To sign, so I'll rescind that.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, the board authorize you to sign the documents that finalize the completion of the project.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Slakman-Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is an aye. I do also want to, and I apologize to your brother, I don't remember his first name, but he's also working on an Eagle Project, I understand, in Dayton.
Yes.
We hope, is it the high school?
Yeah.
Yeah. So congratulations on that. I'm not sure it's complete yet, but I did want to acknowledge that you're also working on an Eagle Project, which is great. And the parents who are here, you should be proud of both of your sons for what they've done for the town of Dayton. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's Nathan.
Nathan, okay. I probably won't remember that. I'm terrible with names, but thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next agenda item is from Tom Piers, Board of Health Presentation on Solid Waste Recycling Advisory Committee. These, he's indicated that he would like to have this continue until March 23rd. So I'd entertain a motion to continue that. Thank you again, Theodore.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table Tom Piers' Board of Health Present, Solid Waste Recycling Presentation until March 23rd.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Slakman-Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is an aye. The next appointment and presentation is from Lynn Foster, Foster-Dash Welsh from UniBank Fiscal Advisory Services, as well as Janelle Vining, our town accountant, and Mike Mullin, our town administrator, overview of the proposed Bristol Plymouth Technical High School Building Project Cost Impacts to the Town of Dayton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to come up here just.
Sure.
Get that zoom. I'm going to grab one of these mics.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
As well, I got my handy dandy keyboard here, so I'm going to share my screen so we can bring everything up, the presentation up as well. So I think everyone is able to see the presentation. So like is that, so yeah, like I'm, I, yeah, like I'm joined by our town accountant, Janelle Vining and Lynn Foster Welsh, like who's, who's our financial advisor from UniBank. So, and as we know, we have a special election for the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School. I, 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 like, actually like on Saturday, March 5th, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. So like, and that is for these, so that, so that is for BP's proposed $305 million school building project. Like in Dayton, I'm just going to get my mouse here. Like in Dayton, voters, as we know, vote like at the, at the Dayton Elementary School, which is located at 1250 Somerset Ave. I'm in the, I, 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 so, I, yeah, like, I, yeah, like, I'm sorry, like the, yeah, so I'm, oh, so I'm sorry, so I'm sorry. The election results depend on the total number of voters in the BP member communities who vote, who vote in the March 5th election. So like in the vote, like in the vote itself is like a yes or no question, but the project and what, and what, so what, so what's actually behind the yes or no vote? Oh, actually, so, so actually has a financial impact to Dayton. So we, so when we, so when we in advance of the vote, we just wanted really to come before you and the board and the residents, really to make sure everybody understood what that impact would be. So, so moving on, we do know it's a $305 million project. So in all the $305 million, so in all the $305 million, the MSBA, so like has already through, has already through a project funding agreement, has actually pledged 125.5 million towards that. So like in that, so that actually leaves $180 million in remaining costs that need to be, so that need to be funded by BP, so that need to be funded by BP's member communities. So like in our share, the town of Dayton's share, so like is estimated between 21.5 million, so in 22.7 million based on how the debt, based on how the debt is structured. So like, so the debt, so the debt would be structured based on enrollment. So like, and we currently have 103 students at the school, which, which represents 7.76% still of the total enrollment. So like in the, so in the, so in the impact of all that combined to our operating budget, so like is a total cost of $800,000 per year, so for the next 30 years. So when BP came to the Board of Selecting Meeting on February 7th, they did talk about the tax and budgetary impacts. So to the, so to Dayton residents, and so in the impact, like in, like in the impact based on the average family single, so based on the average single family home in Dayton, that valued at 351, that valued at $351,000, so like would be approximately $240 per year. Also, the project funding would be assessed to the town. It would be raised through property taxes. So like, and then that $800,000 would be paid through the town's budget and appropriations process. And again, that's eight, so again, that's $800,000 per year.
Thank you.
You can move down.
Yeah, yeah, just go down. But I can do it.
Thank you. Okay. So a project of this size will obviously have a pretty significant impact on our budget. The town has had a priority of conservative-based budgeting aimed at limiting the burden on the Dayton residents and taxpayers. For example, we have a history of funding our police station debt service using free cash, which increases our excess levy capacity and prevents costs from being included in the tax rate. Financial planning and sustainable revenue forecasting continues to be a top priority in the FY '23 budget, especially as it relates to education assessments, which have increased approximately $677,000 from FY '22 and the rising cost of delivering core townwide services. So the financial impact of the project would cause need for a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion temporarily increases the amount of property tax revenue a community can raise in order to fund specific projects. The amount of exclusion may be raised in addition to the community's levy limit, and it does not increase the community's levy limit nor become part of the base for calculating future year's levy limits. An exclusion may be used by a community to fund its own capital spending or its assessed share of capital spending by a regional school district or other regional governmental unit of which it is a member. And this is whether the spending, the spending is financed by borrowing, which is a debt exclusion, or within the annual budget, which would be a capital expenditure exclusion. So this slide here shows our current FY '23 projected operating budget. As you can see, the major portion of our budget, 53% of it is education. Public safety is 17%, employee benefits 10%, general government 7%, highways 4%, and the remaining approximately 9% is sanitation, human services, culture and rep, debt service, liability insurance, and other environmental costs. Here you can see our overall budget from FY '19. And we also included a few columns for our projected FY '23 budget. I don't know how well you can see it, but in the first column, first, I do want to note that the full $800,000 of the BP debt would not be included in our FY '23 operating costs. It wouldn't fully hit until FY '25 if it's approved, but we kind of wanted to give you a picture of what the potential impact could be for our future operating budgets. So in the first FY '23 budgeted column, this is based on our current projections. This does not include the $800,000 for BP debt, and it does not include anything for a debt exclusion. In the column next to that, FY '23 budgeted with debt exclusion, this includes the $800,000 in debt included in our annual assessment from BP, as well as an $800,000 debt exclusion, which you can see it increases the maximum levy available. In the column all the way to the right, FY '23 budgeted without debt exclusion, this includes the $800,000 again as part of our annual assessment from BP, but it is without a debt exclusion. So you can see that our maximum available levy in the column all the way to the right is $800,000 than the column with the debt exclusion. So without the debt exclusion, we would have an operational deficit of about $670,000. Here you can see what our projected FY '23 operating budget is. As it stands right now, without any BP debt, it's about 24.4 million. If the $800,000 were to hit in FY '23, we would be at about $25.2 million. And here, we wanted to present to you what the budget impact would be, assuming there was no debt exclusion. So applying the deficit proportionately across our current service levels is just one scenario of how we would close the deficit, but it wouldn't be without its, a significant impact. As you can see, education, debt service, and liability insurance would not, we didn't include those in how we applied the deficit proportionally because they're non-discretionary. They're not subject for us to be able to change them too much. But public safety takes a huge hit here. If we applied that deficit proportionally, we would have to reduce their operating budget by approximately $253,000. General government also would have to be reduced significantly in highway and trash, trash collection. So we wanted to present to you the impact on the town's operating position to provide everyone with an, with the information to make an informed decision on how the project could be, could be funded for the next 30 years if it's approved on March 5th.
You don't have to do the slides.
I'm just, I'm just going to be a talking head at the moment.
Good evening again. My name is Lynn Foster Welsh and I'm from UniBank Fiscal Advisory Services. Actually, Mike had asked me to come in with his finance team because UniBank, Margaret McLean, you probably know her, she's been in front of you, is actually the town's advisor when you go out on your bond issues. So I, as coming in as just as a budget person, who's has worked with many school districts, towns, and particularly looking at budgets and budget constraints, I do, I should disclose as well, I am the financial advisor for Rehoboth as well as Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District. So I do have the idea of the dynamic with the member town's district. So my point tonight is talking to you about really your budget flexibility and how we see it from a market standpoint, from a financial advisor, and more importantly, probably from your rating agency perspective. Back in 2018, the town, as you know, went and they bonded with, for the public safety facility, drove by it, it's beautiful, which was debt excluded, even though now you're still, you're paying for it, like was said previously, from free cash. Moody's currently has you at a AA3, a good quality credit rating for the size of the town. Okay? And if you go back and I look through kind of their react, their comments, if you will, on their rating report back in 18, they, you know, they did stress that the Dayton had good wealth levels, you had good conservative budgeting, you know, and they look at your debt components as well. So, but also, when you issued those bonds, you basically made a commitment to your bondholders, if you will. You, if you were here, you signed a continuing disclosure document, that basically you're stating to these bondholders that you're going to do everything in your fiduciary duty to maintain that AA3 rating. Moody's usually, it could be more because of the situation we're in, they haven't reached out at much, as much, but they have a duty to the bond market as well to review your credit quality. In some cases, they're done on an annual basis, sometimes they're done on a biannual basis. So what are they looking for? Okay? There's a lot of variables that they look at, but let's face it, the financial stability, meaning reserves, budget liquidity, okay, instability, and how you manage your debt structure. In this case, you know, it, it may be totally out of, it is out of Dayton's control if this project passes or not. So we sit here tonight and we figure out what's the most prudent thing going forward that puts the town of Dayton in the best situation financially, technically, for the next 30 years. Okay? And that's the debt exclusion. That gives you budget flexibility. And I think is the prior slides upset, you know, as you pointed out, you know, that you're not going to have that levy capacity once this hits. It's $800,000 a year. That's huge. It gives you no, if it is inside the levy and does not get excluded, you have that pie chart that we showed you is going to be so much more education. And what that means to the level of services and staff in the town could be a detriment. Okay? And so when, let's go back and let's look at the market. You have other projects that you're thinking about in the future, right? A library, fire station. How do you do those things? How do you have, you have no flexibility. And I look at it too, and I say, in the current environment that we're in, you know, we're looking at local receipts. And, you know, we see what's happening with motor vehicle. I mean, look what just happened. People can't buy cars. So what does that do for your motor vehicle receipts, right? Your new car money coming in. It affects everything. Your cost of goods and services is going up. And I know, I'm talking to you as a town and I can think that people at home will say, and tell me something I don't know, because they can feel it in their wallets as well. But I think, you know, looking at the town of Dayton and what this will do if it does not get debt excluded, you know, Moody's can come back and they see that you're paying this through the levy. I don't see that you're going to maintain that AA3. I don't see it. And if your rating goes down, your cost of borrowing goes up. So those are things that people kind of need to really think about. This is a 30-year commitment that if they, you know, if, if they put you in that situation where you're making cuts and, you know, I mean, the revenue sources are not, they're not abundant, you know, to offset this. It, it's a huge amount of dollars. But if you're going to go, if it passes, this is the most prudent way. People want to go for, for their town and see it in a good budget, have good budget flexibility and financial sustainability, it's with a debt exclusion. Again, and I also say, you know, this is a long way off. When we talk about 2038 and 2039, I probably will not be here to present, but that's when the Dayton-Rehoboth, 2038, I believe, the Dayton-Rehoboth debt exclusion goes off the book, so to speak. And the following year, the public safety building in 2039 comes off the book. So that's no longer, you know, being taxed, if you will, over the levy. So I sit there tonight and I say, you know, make, make good decisions, you know, because this, if it does not get debt excluded, you know, it's just going to hurt this town so much. And I think your, 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 your peers in your other towns, you know, their percentages may be small, but they're smaller communities and feel the same thing. I, as I understand it, from what I understand, everybody is going to look for the debt exclusion. And that's the prudent thing to do. Mike and I have talked about, you know, on a separate but equally important subject, about producing a debt management policy that the town should adhere to and sign off and, you know, what are the parameters? You know, what, what projects would you go, would automatically call for a debt exclusion? What wouldn't? Kind of fine tune that so people understand it as you move forward. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Do my colleagues have any? Slakman-Hull?
Ideally, what is our goal for excess levy? I mean, I, I see if the project passes, it would reduce the levy to 129,000.
I wouldn't want to see it go past where it is right now. Where are we at the, we're at the five?
So if we have the, right now, if we have the ability to continue to pay the police station debt from free cash, our excess levy would be approximately $500,000 this year as the FY '23 projected budget stands.
And, and you bring up a good point.
So if you want to segue over to free cash, yes, you do, okay.
Yeah, that would be helpful, too.
Well, you know, ideally, the, the rule of free cash, if you will, that's really considered a one-time revenue and should never fund recurring expenses because that number is always changing. Okay? And free cash is derived from one or two sources. It's either you've been conservative in your local receipts and your local receipts come in higher than what you budgeted for. On the expense side, you're not expending as much as you would, you know? That's simple. That's your kind of pot of money at the end. So let's think about what we just talked about, motor vehicle. Like, look at your local receipts. Look at everything that has kind of been a lesson of what we've just gone through in the last two years. If you're depending on meals tax, you know, hotel motel taxes, you know, that's a, that, as we see it now, is a shrinking revenue source. On the expenditure side, we're seeing our cost, our cost of delivering services are going up. So you're getting that squeeze. So, I mean, that can only have an effect as you go forward on your free cash.
Thank you. Dr. Z, you have any questions?
Yes. I think you answered part of my question, which I think we all understand, like us in the room, we all understand why a debt exclusion is the better option if it passes on March 5th. And in that regard, we really don't have a choice but to find where we're going to fund the $800,000 every fiscal year. My question is, could you explain or go into a little more detail for people watching why, for example, debt exclusion is more palatable than like a proposition two and a half over? why, for example, debt exclusion is more palatable than like a proposition two and a half override?
Well, the proposition override is going to be a, it's a one-time, it's for your operating budget. And you're going to have to go back and approve it every year to pay off your debt service. And in some cases, I've seen, you know, operating overrides, or we call them capital overrides, whereby if you have like a road project, for instance, and you're going to do it over a certain number of years. So a town may go out and do the override for $5 million and just get that kind of bank in the bank. But you would have to go out every year for your operational override. You can keep going back for a debt exclusion, okay? I mean, nothing, but it is risky. And I say eight, and I look at this, I say, you just see the numbers that were presented of what $800,000 would do in one year, just one year, hit. So if you, if you're out there for two years and you're still out trying to get the debt exclusion, imagine how much, you're two years behind the eight ball. And it's tough to catch up because in Massachusetts, we live under, you know, Prop 2 and 1/2.
Yeah, you can only.
You know, you can only, yeah, it's, so that's important. I think people have to realize and understand the predicament that the town would be in if that debt exclusion doesn't pass. Yeah.
Anything else?
I have, I have no horse in the race. I'm just, I've seen it, I've been doing this for over 30 years. And when Mike had asked me to take a look at the numbers, and I thought they put an extra zero on the 800,000, but.
My only comment is that we've, obviously, we've done it in the past for the police station. We've been fortunate enough that when we have our free cash, we've been able to pay that. We may not be able to do that with free cash. So if this does pass, and that's a big if, if this does pass, I would be supporting a debt exclusion. I know that some towns have on the ballot for March 5, they have the voting yes or no on the BP project, and then they also have the debt exclusion.
They're doing it the same day.
And I'm glad that the town of Dyton didn't do that because I think that the residents need to talk about this and listen and listen to all the facts regarding, regarding this.
And, you know, you bring up a good point, too, is, you know, they did, the voters, they were very supportive in the debt exclusion for the public safety. They've also debt excluded all of the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District debt as well.
Yeah.
So there's been very strong support here in Dyton. I think people understand what needs to get done, there's some pride in this community.
So how does this work if it's approved and it's for 30 years? When it's all paid, do we have a ceremony? I'll be 102, so I just want to let my family know that they need to bring me here, assuming they take my license away from me. But 30 years is a long time, however, this is, if it does pass, I mean, I have no idea whether or not it's going to pass. This is the route that I think the town needs to go.
I don't have any doubt from an advisory standpoint. I can't, you know, people sometimes ask me, where's the low-hanging fruit? I don't, there's no low-hanging fruit. The tree is bare.
We see our receipts coming, you mentioned the excise tax, but also building permits, there's been a lot of different things that have slowed down in town. So it's troubling and concerning. So if this does pass, then we, as the board and as residents, we need to take the appropriate action on this. Does the board have any other questions for either of the three people before us?
No, I thought that was a really good presentation.
I want to thank everyone for the presentation. It was great. It's very informative for the residents in town, so hopefully they've listened and to make the right decision on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Are we, are we putting this on the website?
Yes, it's already on the website, it's already on the town website, and there are our BP information as well.
Nice.
Thank you.
No problem.
Public input, is there any public input? Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to participate in public input? Anybody on Zoom wish to speak? Public input? Anybody in the audience here? If not, we're going to move on to announcements. I'll read the first announcement. We have an elections on April 9, 2022, at the elementary school from 7:00 AM, I believe it's, till 5:00 PM, yes. And therefore, the following offices are positions. Board of Assessors, all of these are three years with the exception of one. Board of Assessors, Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee Member, Parks and Recreation Planning Board, Public Library Trustee, Selectmen, Sewer Commissioner, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, and Town Treasurer. And the Town Moderator is for one year. Dr. Z, will you read the rest of the announcements, please?
Yes. Free rapid tests are being offered to all residents in the United States. The pre-order period for the at-home COVID-19 tests via www.covidtest.gov has begun. Every household in the United States is eligible to order at-home COVID-19 tests. The tests are completely free and will usually ship in seven to 12 days.
Just a comment that we received hours.
Yeah, we finally got it.
Yesterday, so they're, sending them out.
Just wait, slight delay, but they are free. Dyton Historical Society presents King Philip meets J.K. Milliken, a discussion with author Eric Schultz, Sunday, February 27, 2022, at 2:00 PM at the Friendship Hall, 2056 Elm Street. Admission is free, masks are required. The Town Clerk's office is in need of an additional four to six election workers for elections and town meetings. If interested or you would like more information, please reach out to Town Clerk Mark Pacico by calling 508-669-5411, option 2. There will be a special election held on Saturday, March 5, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Dyton Elementary School for the proposed Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Building Project. There is a dedicated section of the town website at www.dytin-ma.gov that has been created to provide information about the project. And this presentation before that was just demonstrated was also placed on the website as well, so thank you. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April 1, 2022. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. A reminder that open burning season is from January 15 through May 1, between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. A $10 permit from Dyton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning, and you can also purchase those burning permits online. Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is town administrator reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have three quick updates. As we talked about earlier, the FY23 budget process is well underway, but it, but it isn't going to be more challenging than it has been in the last, in the last few years. Like, and we're on par, and we're on par to have a budget, we're on par to have a budget year that really closely mirrors what actually our fiscal position was going back to fiscal year 19, as we just saw on the spreadsheet as well. So the town accountant and I are working closely with town departments. Like, we've been wrapping up our bud, we've been wrapping up our budget meetings, but already plan to go back to some departments with whom, with whom we've already met to identify the possibility of even more targeted reductions, you know, based on the challenges that I mentioned earlier. And we're on track to have draft budget recommendations to you during the next meeting, which is on March 9. So we, Alec will have all that, and we're in good shape to have that information to you then. So one of the things, Alec, since I started almost a year ago, that's been a little elusive, has been over the last 12 months, has been tracking down the status of our, tracking down the status of our housing production plan, which was approved by both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board in February of 2019. It's almost three years ago. So like, we do, we do have some, we do have some success, we have tracked it down, and we have reached out to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they have agreed to accept it, as a now three-year-old plan. And this is hugely important because it also, like, it also impacts how we apply for grants through the executive housing, through the Executive Office for Housing and Economic Development. So I believe about a week and a half ago, DCD got the plan, you know, and they, and they have confirmed that they have all the, that they have all the information and the documentation of votes that are needed for them to review it. So I just wanted to give that update, like, that, Alec, it's something I'm happy about. I mean, I didn't have any, oh, you know, I didn't have any effort on the project itself, but I'm, you know, I'm happy that we did bring it to some finality here.
Do you have your hand up?
Yeah. So I was just confused about what the issue was. Was the issue that it never got submitted to the Commonwealth, the relevant agency with the Commonwealth? Because I know that the plan was done.
I believe it was because it was all approved.
Yeah.
Yes, this went before the 40B committee, Housing Committee that I'm on, Tom Pius is on, and other members, Charlie Mello is on, I believe Alice Souza was on. And we work with Serp to come up with a housing production plan. We did it in 2014, we did it again in 2019. We believe it was submitted, but it was never approved by, whether it got lost or whatever. I believe that they don't have it or.
Yeah, somehow they don't have it.
Right. So it's been submitted, and in a couple of years from now, we're going to have to go through this again.
Yeah, I was going to say, two years.
We'll have to update it again. So it'll be five years, this is something that our town needs to do. But appreciate the work you've done on that, to resubmit it.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to close out that chapter, you know? So, so like, I just wanted to quickly mention that.
Dr. Z, he's going to hand it up.
I just have another question. Should we double, so we also work with Serp on other things, so my question is, should we, on things where we rely on Serp to submit them, should we just double check on those things going forward? Because I have a couple of things.
Yes, we can, we can absolutely do that.
Because there's been some turnover, too.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's Serp's fault that I, I believe that they weren't the ones responsible for submitting it. So we believe that it was submitted.
Yeah.
They don't have any record of it, but that's fine.
Yeah, so hopefully we clear that whole thing up and we can all move forward with DCD and Serp and everyone. So I just wanted to provide that update. And then actually, the last update I have, at the last meeting, like, we discussed actually funding for the Pleasant Street Bridge, like, oh, yeah, like, at length, like, and we discussed the potential federal and state, and we discussed the federal and state infrastructure funding that's out there. So, Alec, actually, since the meeting on the 9th, like, actually, last week I had some time and I did follow up in a letter, I did follow up in a letter on behalf of the town to a legislative delegation, like, and I asked, oh, yeah, like, and once again, yeah, like, and once again called attention to our priority here, like, and I, like, and I asked Congressman Najin Khoras, Senator Enmark, Eva Padad, and Senator Pacico for their continued work with us. So hopefully, over the next few years, we'll be able to get funding for that.
Dr. Z.
Did we, did we ever get clarity? Because this isn't specifically asking for like money from that bipartisan infrastructure bill. So like, did we ever figure out how, like, what that process is? I did find through the grapevine, actually, I should tell you both this because it's relevant. My understanding, sorry, I just remembered this, and I did think I told you this. The process is the same as it would be when we originally tried to get funding for the Pleasant Street Bridge back in pre-pandemic. Exactly. So it would be like asking our state representative to, is the appropriate word earmarked? Or set aside certain money? So when that process opens, I think we will be notified and I think it would come to the board. Yeah, absolutely. And they know that these projects are on our radar, so I forgot that. We figured that out.
Right. And when we met with the congressman, as well as the state revenue, state senator, the three of us, we all gave, let them know that this was a major concern of ours and we would like whatever assistance they can have for the town of Dyton.
So, yeah, I just wanted to give those updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is all business review, discuss, and act on reconsideration of vote to appoint temporary sewer department clerk. As the board knows, and residents know that we voted on this at the last meeting, I did check Robert Rules of Order, and for us to reconsider a motion that we voted on in the past, you had to have voted on the prevalent side. In other words, this one passed, so you or I would have to make the motion to reconsider. If it defeated, those that voted to defeat it would have to make the motion to reconsider. Anybody can second it, but one of those people have to vote to reconsider, so maybe, Selectman Hull, you can explain to us the reason why you wanted to reconsider this motion.
When the issue came up, I had some concerns. Those concerns had to do with a perception issue. They were in no way a reflection on either the sewer department or the conservation department. And in a case of the person that was appointed was in no way a reflection on the job that that person is doing. And if I offended her, I apologize. What I wanted to do through this motion was to present a unified front. Because of the passing of Joelle, the sewer department does have a vacancy and a real need to get out the tax bill. And I understand that need. And Lisa is graciously, is willing to help them. So as a result, I was asking respectfully if we could reconsider so that I would change my vote to an affirmative, so that we would show that it was a unified front.
I have no issue with that. I didn't realize we could, there's a lot of things I wish I would have reconsidered, but I totally understand, and I respect that.
You're going to be very careful with this. Fortunately, I think this motion would, if it's reconsidered, would pass, so we're not changing, because, you know, obviously, we hired this person, this person has been doing work, and I, I'm not sure if it's still March 1st, maybe, already, so it's.
It's the March 3rd, yeah.
March 3rd, so that's already next week, so I wouldn't want to undo that, obviously.
No, no, no. We're going to reconsider it and then.
We have to, there's a motion to reconsider, then there's going to be a motion to actually vote on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So entertain a motion to reconsider. It can't be, Selectman Hull, it has to be one of us.
So moved.
You can second it, if you wish.
I second.
Second. Any discussion?
I love that you read the Robert Rules of Orders. I didn't realize it was this complicated, though.
It was tedious.
Due diligence, though, I love it. But I, like I said, I respect it. And as I always tell you, at least since I've been here, anytime that a selectman has requested something beyond the agenda, we all put it on here. I don't think there's been a time that I can recall that Selectman Pacico hasn't put something on.
I have to be honest, there's been a couple of times.
Okay, well, I didn't even know, so it didn't affect me.
You're not putting it on the agenda. Chairman has the final say on the agenda.
True, yeah. And you know I respect that.
I have to be honest, I have to be honest. It depends on how big the agenda is and that kind of stuff, so anyway.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But Selectman Hull did request this, and that's fine. He gave us his explanation as to why he wanted to do this. So I'm going to call for a vote on this, if there's no further discussion.
The motion to reconsider?
To reconsider.
Okay.
Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacico is an aye. So entertain a motion then to, to appoint Lisa Calatoni, Tony, to the Sewer Commission until March 3 at 10 hours a week at the rate of $20, and I forget what the change was. It goes by the union contract.
The rate that we approved at the last meeting. And I will, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacico is an aye. So that was unanimous. Selectman Hull?
On the agenda for today, I don't see anything in regards to selectmen reports. Will you allow that? Because I do have some.
Yes, and I just noticed it now. I didn't pick up on it earlier. We went over the agenda, I didn't pick up on it, but I just noticed now, what, maybe it's because none of us had indicated to.
Yeah, no, I apologize. That was unintentional by any means.
No, no, I didn't have anything.
Well, I didn't know because I do have some.
Yes, I'm not sure what point we'll, since they're all in order, I guess, I don't know. Did we take a vote on, we already took a vote to approve Lisa? Is that correct?
Yes.
So I will entertain, if you want, I'll entertain a motion to have selectmen reports.
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Camp Pacico is an aye, and Selectman Hull is an aye. And you have a report, you said?
Yes, they were, last evening, I attended the Open Space Committee in their discussions about the residential design by law. That committee is making some headway. At that meeting, they made a request, and that request was for me to put out there that because of the amount of work that they are trying to do. to put out there that because of the amount of work that they are trying to do, they have two vacancies, and they were hoping that the residents of Dayton would come on board. This committee is not only working on the bylaw, residential design bylaw, but they, like the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, are trying to identify and reaching out to private individuals about the potential.
Thank you.
For purchasing land by the town or acquiring land through various ways for the town to use for the many projects that they have coming up. One of the things in addition to that, that, Mr. Mullin, I'm sorry to volunteer you for this, but it has become evident from listening to the, the, them and my role on the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, that we have two committees that are doing the same thing. Ours is more industrial, theirs is more looking at potential sites for things like a fire station or a library and that sort of thing. And I said it was really important that someone coordinate that, so one, we're not both reaching out to the same peoples. And also, um, the individual who knows best this is the direction different committees or Mr. Aguirre, his, as input in this as well, um, we asked if Mr. Mullin would help to coordinate that, so the Dayton Industrial Development Commission and the Open Space have both agreed that Mr. Mullin will be the point of contact before they reach out to any, if they have an idea, you know, some landowner, uh, or some building that they know that people are willing to donate to the town or, you know, exchange for tax break, that they would reach out to Mr. Mullin first before they did anything. So we wouldn't have any, any problems with that.
It's, so yeah, like on that, one of the things that, so that I think is going to really help, so one of the things, and it's a big thing that I really think is gonna help focus, uh, the endeavor, the development industrial commission's focus, so like is the economic development plan, uh, that we're gonna be launching through Serpent as well. Like I think, one of the things, and I think it was even a challenge, uh, like for the prior development industry, for the prior development industrial commission as well, is an understanding of what the focus actually is. Uh, and I think the economic development plan and all that's gonna be involved in that, uh, like it will be all, like it will be all encompassing and all consuming. So I think in terms of, uh, like, uh, like any overlap that may exist and that may need to be managed, I think, so I think how we launch, so how we launch and manage the economic development plan, so with Serpent, so like and we're gonna be doing, uh, we're gonna be kicking off that effort, um, at the Development Industrial Commission meeting, um, on Monday night. So like that is, I think, yeah, like I don't wanna be too hopeful, but I mean realistic, like I think that's really gonna set, uh, actually help better set those expectations in terms of where the focuses are, but.
Do you have your hand up, Doctor Z?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I do agree with Selectman Hull that eventually, so I, I, I don't go to the, and I apologize, I don't go to the Development and Industrial Commission meeting, so I don't know how far along you, your team is in their process, um, including crafting, as Town Administrator Mullin said, the economic development plan, but I do see your point and agree that eventually conversate, when you have your marching orders from the plan and we have a better idea of, and are more established and integrated with the other relevant stakeholders, I do see the overlap in the sense of having those conversations with folks who may be interested in acquire, acquiring land that maybe the town owns, that maybe we don't use anymore, um, that could be used, for example, by a business owner or someone who wants to do, in a perfect world, manufacturing or something like that, so I do see that, but I do agree that there's a lot of work, um, that I think the Open Space Committee, as you know, needs to do with their relevant stakeholders. Um, and then we'll see where, um, the economic development plan leads the Development and Industrial Commission and where those interests overlap, uh, once we have all that established, so I look forward to that, I do, it's exciting. But I do agree that at that point, we wouldn't wanna duplicate efforts between, right, and then.
Especially reaching out to the, you know, two party groups.
We wanna appear organized, and have the best front possible.
Disappear anyway.
Right, exactly, fake it till you make it.
So at the end of the day, there's another wrinkle in this also, because we, there's another wrinkle, because we do have like a, so we do also have like a town land use.
Correct, yeah, they make the decisions actually, with the land.
Well, I.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanna set the expectation that it's actually, so it's actually that group.
Mm-hmm.
Who is gonna, so is gonna have the overarching say about how we manage, so how we manage that asset, so it's not even gonna be Development Industrial Commission.
We don't.
So it's not gonna be Open Space, those, oh, you know, and how the strategy and why, like and how those properties are managed are actually up to that committee, not anybody else.
And that's, just to add that, when I was referring to stakeholders, I didn't wanna name everyone, but obviously, because the land use committee is literally the body, and I don't know if you're on it, but you probably are, yeah, they make the decisions in terms of like, are we gonna acquire this? Are we going to, um, auction this piece of land, cause we don't need any, anymore? But I do think that the Development and Industrial Commission, the Open Space Committee, once we are up and running and have more members, as you alluded to, which thank you for that, by the way, um, and I know the members appreciate that, um, I think that we will be able to handle more and be able to focus on things like that. Uh, but right now, we're just kinda, we have our marching orders from the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and as you alluded to, the Open Space Residential Bylaw was one of the things, of the many, um, that we can do um, to help us achieve the goals outlined in the plan.
Selectman Hull?
One of the things that I found really exciting to hear Kevin Smith talk about this, for those of us who played SimCity in our younger days, people are beginning, on those two committees, of looking, going around town, looking at land and saying, wow, what could that be used for? Or, on a positive, or depending on how you feel about developments, do I want a hundred houses on that lot, or would it be best for the town to have a solar farm? Or is, could that land be used for, Open Space handles more, looking at it from the recreational point of view. What we're getting, because we're limited manpower in the town, and the beauty is, these people are volunteers, and they're reaching out and helping, and bringing it back to the town officials. How about, hey, I was talking to this business owner, like this happened to me recently. There is someone who is looking to open a business in Dayton, and we put them in touch with the planning board because it's gonna involve a lot of work. But more and more town residents wanna become a part of the process, the more likely this town is to start to bring businesses into the town to help with the tax law.
Yeah, absolutely, may I add one last thing, and I, I did see you.
You didn't wait for an answer though.
No, I was hoping you would say yes, um, but you, we will absolutely, absolutely be reaching out to you regarding the Open Space Residential Bylaws, because our committee had a couple of questions, in particular of how other communities were doing it, and it didn't seem like their goals were the same as ours in terms of trying to have more open space, which usually means less houses, in other towns, they tried to put the houses closer together to like meet those guidelines, but still have the same overall number of houses, so we'll definitely need to pick your brain. Exactly, yeah. When we're ready, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna like waste your time or anything. Thank you, thank you.
Sort of, the la, last time I attended a land use, uh, committee, they actually went over all the properties available in town, and they had an open discussion about whether we should preserve this, whether should we put this out for auction, so it's, it's very interesting to attend those meetings. I'm not sure how often they meet, but, uh, they seriously listen to, you know, if we auction this land here, is it gonna result in many houses being built and that kinda stuff, so, uh, it's an important committee in town, yes, open space and everything else.
The second one was the Dayton Water District. They are still replacing, uh, meter readers, batteries, they have done eight hundred of the thousand that are out there, and they are asking for those people who received notification to please contact them. In March, they will start up again to come to the homes to finish the project. Also, there are many residents in town who received an estimated bill, and those numbers are high. The estimated bill numbers are high, they wanted me to pass on, do not panic. On the instructions, it says to fill out the cod with your actual meter reading and submit it, or in the mail, self, no postage, or call them, and they will tell you, reconcile your bill with you. The last thing in regards to the Dayton Water District is huge, and it was initiated by Peter Roach, who I have found to be an incredible, very talented CPA who has helped this town immensely. Well, he offered to work with the water district, he attended the meeting to help them in their budget preparation, but also in their financial planning, and he was going to reach out to Mr. Rendon to see if he would be willing to help them too. As we have heard several meetings, the water district has many projects that need funding, and we felt that with the water bills and the tax bills that we have received lately. One of the things that they recognize is the voters, taxpayers are being adversely affected by this, and they want to let people know that they are going to do their best to help relieve the problem, and having, uh, people like Mr. Roach helping them is a huge plus. Uh, the third was the school department, um, I'm sure many of you are aware that at the last, oh, last week, William Rooney was hired as the new superintendent. I just wanna make my colleagues aware that the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, that I've kinda developed a relationship with, one of our goals with the Board of Selectmen and myself, working with them, is to work close, more closely with the people of Rehoboth, both with the school committee and with the Board of Selectmen, and they're looking to hold a reception for Mr. Rooney in the future, if our board would so wish to join them.
Yeah.
To talk, to have Mr. Rooney explain what his goals are for the district, to also hear our concerns, and also to hear from both sides of the aisle what our concerns are, to help improve the relationships between Rehoboth and Dayton. What I'm saying doesn't indicate that the relationship is bad, they want to improve it. And one of the things that seems that we don't do a lot of is communication.
Well, to be honest, we've made that attempt, we've had several meetings, as you know, with, with them, so. So we've made the attempt, and there, there has been some disagreements to both towns, uh, but I would support some way to kind of, uh, resolve this, but, from my point of view, it's not our fault.
Okay.
It's not Dayton's fault.
Now, yeah, out of respect, what I'm going to do, cause you've expressed an interest, is I will tell their chairman, Skip Batney, to get in touch with Mr. Pacheco, Ken?
Sure.
Okay, then.
When does, uh, Mr. Rooney start, do you know, what's, is it the end of?
End of the.
July first, right?
July first.
July first.
Thank you.
There was a great write-up in the Sun Chronicle on him, uh, today, I don't know if anybody saw it, uh, they feel he's, they hate to lose him, and they think it's, it's gonna be, uh, great for the town of Dayton and Rehoboth.
As we're all aware, there, there is a vacancy on the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee, and they'll be coming before us to ask for a joint meeting, so we can put a replacement in. And lastly, um, Dayton-Rehoboth has a new budget director, his name is Robert Baxter, and, um, his efforts, from what I've seen thus far, have been very impressive, and a really, really good point, and I believe Mr. Mullin would agree, is that Mr. Baxter has been working very closely with Mr. Balla, excuse me, with Mr. Mullin, um, on the budget for this year, and there is transparency this year.
And.
A sincere effort on his.
Yeah, you were there, but at Capitol Outlay Committee, he also presented it, you were there, right, Billy?
Yes.
Uh, and he, I was impressed with his knowledge and his looking towards the future for, for both towns, that was good.
So, uh, I also agree, um, that, you know, we have tried over the years, um, there have been resets, and we've tried having the joint meetings, um, so I definitely see your point of view, my opinion on it is anytime that they, this is just, I'm speaking for myself, anytime that they reach out to me, I'll meet, I have no issue with it.
Okay.
I share a lot of the same sentiments, but, you know, the bottom line is, we do share a school district with them. And so we're bound by that nineteen, I don't, you can correct me, Mrs. Kucha, if I'm wrong, um, but it's an agreement that was signed, I think in sixty-seven, it was either sixty-four or sixty-seven.
Was it eighty-seven?
That was the, that was the, that was the amendment. Correct, the original was signed by Senator John F. Kennedy, um, right, am I wrong? Um, so there is that history, um, I'm the type of person, I don't care where we've been, I'm more concerned with where we're going. Um, and I really do see, um, the new superintendent appointment as like a real pivot point, where we could have an actual reset, um, so I will not be bringing any of the baggage and the things that have happened over the last six years with that, I really wanna bring a fresh, um, mind and a fresh perspective, so, um, I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Sh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item on the new business review, discuss and act on proposed town meeting, uh, schedule and warrant process. We've been presenting, presented a possible, uh, schedule for the annual town meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's been suggested that on March ninth, we open up the warrants, April thirteenth, we close the warrants, April twenty-seventh, Board of Selectmen vote on articles to be included on the warrants, April twenty-seventh through May eleventh, legal review. May eleventh, sign the warrant, May twenty-third, post the warrant, and May twenty-fifth, Board of Selectmen recommendation on warrant articles, and for June sixth to be the annual, uh, town, uh, meeting. So if everybody's in agreement, I will entertain a motion to approve these, uh, suggested dates.
Mr. Chairman, I vote, I motion, excuse me, that the Board of Selectmen approve the annual town meeting schedule as prepared and presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Doctor Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye, just want to, uh, let our town administrator know, cause I think we're all on the same page. We want a warrant article, uh, to increase the, uh, cost for the seniors, to allow them to be able to take a thousand dollars, I think that's a figure we agreed on, a thousand dollars off the, if they're eligible, off their taxes, right now, uh, was, I think Mr. Pye is way back in twenty, two thousand and six. Right now, was, I think Mr. Pye is way back in twenty, two thousand and six, had proposed five hundred dollars, which, and there's certain requirements that the residents have to obtain.
Of course.
And it's been a cost of living, it's about seven hundred and forty-two dollars now that they can take off their taxes for those that are eligible. But I, I think, given the fact that people are on fixed income, we want to keep those people in town, that we should put a warrant article to increase it to a thousand dollars for the residents. And I've talked to the assessors about this in the past and they seem to be receptive to it. So, there isn't that many people who apply. There may be more that are eligible but don't apply, but, and I think we ought to do a little bit more advertising.
I was, that was my question.
Let the seniors know.
Yeah.
Maybe put in the strawberry vine.
Is it not already?
What do you mean?
Like, information on the senior tax exemption? I know the assessors.
I think the times are expired. They have, they have a window, a short window.
It's in the summer. It's like June, I think.
No, I actually think it's January to February.
You're talking about the abatements as well?
Yes, that's right, yes.
So, there's a regular abatement and then there's a senior tax abatement. To be honest with, to be honest with, to be honest, I'm not, like, I'm not sure, like, if both schedules go hand in hand. But yeah, well.
The information is on the assessor's site. I, I just don't have it memorized.
Yes. And I printed it up, I didn't bring it with me tonight.
Yeah, we'll do a better job getting it out there for sure.
It's, the other thing I wanted to, so I actually assumed, and I know this is bad, making that assumption, that everyone just kind of knew about it because it says on the assessor's website that if you've applied for it before, whether, I don't know, you were approved or not, they automatically send you the application every year. But I did have a conversation with someone actually who is knowledgeable about how things work, is, has, is on several different positions with the town, on different committees. They didn't know about the elderly tax exemption. And that's kind of where it hit me, that even people who come to meetings and are on other boards and committees, they don't know about it. They didn't know that they were eligible. And the only reason I brought it up was because they were explaining to me, yeah, you know, it's been hard this year. I could use, you know, an abatement or an exemption. And I said, do you know about that, the elderly tax? I, they are of age and they had already told me that, I did not assume. And they're going to look into it for the next year. Because I think, I forget what date it is, but it's already passed.
I believe it's passed.
Yeah. And we've already set the tax rate and everything, so. But anyway, I would love if we could get that information out to as many people as possible. And definitely, we should reach out to primetime in the council on aging about that. And if you want me to do that, I'm happy to do that as well. But I think that's the easiest place to get the information out there.
Right, and anybody who's over the age of sixty, I think, to be eligible for this, I think you have to be seventy. But anybody over the age of sixty gets the strawberry vine, so it's a good place to put that.
We're going to prep them.
We're going to prep them.
Ten years if you're sixty.
Ten years, you're going to be eligible.
Get that application in. But it is real. And when I told that individual that they could get approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, it makes like a big difference. I know you or I may sit up here and say, what, seven hundred and fifty? I mean, I wouldn't say that, I doubt you would either, but.
If someone's on a fixed income.
They were shocked. They were shocked. And then when we told them that you had a proposal to make it a thousand dollars, they couldn't believe it. They were like, that's like a quarter. That's almost like an entire quarter's taxes, so, for that individual. So, it does make a big difference.
It's a great program and quite friendly. Frankly, my father lived in Swansea, was eligible for their abatement. And I used to fill out his paperwork for that. And he was a hard worker, worked till the age of seventy-five. But he was eligible for it because the requirements are so strict, but he was eligible for it. So, people who are on a fixed income, I mean, we take it for granted, we're working or whatever. I'm retired, but I'm able to pay my taxes. But not everybody's in that position and we have to take that into consideration. And for the seniors, I don't want to see seniors leave the town. They've spent forty, fifty, sixty years in town and the taxes are so high that they have to leave the town. So, this gives us an opportunity to present it to the people. And I think the residents will be supportive of it. They supported it back when Mr. Pye has brought it up about fifteen years ago. So, just want to make sure that we keep that as an article for the board.
Thank you.
I don't know the wording, maybe a lawyer.
Yeah, we'll deal with that.
But we can get that information.
We got some time.
We got some time. And we did take a vote on the warrants, right, I believe we did. Right? Okay. So, the next, sadly, the next agenda item is a letter that was sent to our town clerk, addressed to Mark Pacheco. Dear Mr. Pacheco, after months of deliberating, I have made the difficult decision to step down from the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee. A decision that has been extremely difficult as I have never stepped down or walked away from a position in my entire life. This past year has, however, given me a new perspective on life, specifically on how quickly it passes us by. It is with this in mind, I've decided nothing, I've decided nothing would take precedence over my family or interfere with my ability to enjoy watching my kids grow up and experience all that is important to them and my family as a whole. While one would think meetings every other week would not be that impactful, I'm sure it is. The truth is always, almost every meeting conflicted with something within my personal schedule. That conflict combined with the times it takes outside of my regular meetings to prepare properly, along with the other various meeting required, meetings required, in addition, our bi-weekly ones, has led to this decision. I am contemplating staying on the, I had contemplated staying on the committee and attending meetings or participating only when scheduled allowed. However, that would not be fair to the committee, district administration, students of the district or the community of Dyton. While there is never a good time to step down from an elected position, I do believe now is best possible time to do so. We have approved the tentative budget for next year and have successfully finished our superintendent search, setting the district up for growth and positivity moving into the fiscal year 2023 school year. My last day serving on a Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee will be February 18th, 2022. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me anytime before my last date.
We can't contact them now. No, I'm just kidding. It's after the 18th, don't you send that email.
So, if you've read the information that we received from Town Council Attorney Gay, we have, it would be the Board of Selectmen, as well as the remaining members of the Dyton-Rehoboth Committee, the Dyton members of the Dyton-Rehoboth School Committee would be making that decision. And we have thirty days to make that decision. So, before we vote to accept this resignation, I have suggested, because we're also going to be going over budgets in March, I've suggested that we meet three times in March because it's going to overwhelm our meetings. We're going to, we have a lot of stuff scheduled. So, if the Board is okay, we don't have to take a vote on it, that we meet on March 9th, March 16th and March 23rd. And that we have, we invite the remaining members of the school committee on March 16th to come in and we will pick a new school, school committee member. And if we, we can't vote on it, but if we agree on this, I would ask us, Town Administrator Mullen, to make sure that this is advertised, that we have an opening for the school committee.
Then we post the vacancy.
Yes. Do you want to say anything on this?
Just that we're in agreement with what's been recommended on the March 16th date. We do have our preliminary budget approved. However, we have our public meeting coming up in March 22nd, I believe. So, we were able to do that by the 16th. I don't want to frighten anyone away and make them think that they have to know that entire budget by the time they are appointed. But certainly, the sooner we act, the better. We'll have our five members. And I think we missed, if I didn't say thank you very much to Tom O'Connor. His valuable service to the district and the community will be missed and so will his voice on that committee.
Sure, if I remember correctly, he was the chair at one point, maybe, because he was the vice chair.
Many questions at this point.
Slackman Hull.
My question is, who oversees this process? Is it Mr. Pacheco, Mark Pacheco, or is it Mike?
It's us together.
It's actually the Board of Selectmen with the remaining, with the remaining Dyton members of the school committee specified.
We're the body.
One D of the regional agreement.
So, we've done this in the past. You weren't on the board. In fact, that's why Mr. O'Connor was actually appointed, that he, that he ran the following year, I believe, and got elected. But we all sit together, we interview the candidates, you know, if there's more than one, obviously, but interview the candidates and we make a decision. It's a, not a secret ballot. You vote for the candidate that you think would best serve the town of Dyton. But we've done that in the past, so.
So, that you'll be the chairman of the?
Right, we'll, we'll be on the agenda and we'll hopefully, early on in the agenda.
Is there a policy or procedure for how this plays out as far as the voting? If it should go on more than one round?
I think it's the majority and that's.
It's just the majority, yeah.
That's where we handled it, if I recall.
So, yeah, it was, it was the four remaining Dyton School Committee members at that time, plus the three selectmen at that time. Yeah, and then the majority.
And we did interview each of the candidates that did apply. We did turn it away. We interviewed each of them. We each came with questions that evening and interviewed each of the candidates. It was not to answer Mr. Hull's question. It wasn't a particular procedure. We just want the majority, is my understanding, my recollection.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And each candidate would give us reasons, tell us the reasons why they would like to be on the school committee. We have the opportunity, as well as the school committee, to ask them any questions that we feel is appropriate. But that is a possibility that someone doesn't get the majority, so I guess we would have to.
Especially if you have more than two candidates.
Yes. Well, we had three candidates the last time, I believe. We had three candidates, I think.
I think it was just two.
No, we had, we had a number of candidates.
Oh, we did have three, you're right, you're right. I forgot the, yes, that's, that's correct. We had at least three.
May I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So, Mr. Mullen, will you send, once people apply, will that be sent, will that information be sent to the school committee?
Yes.
Prior to that evening, so that we would have those?
Yes, absolutely. Everyone will have the application, any letter, any letters of interest in advance. So, everyone will be operating based on the same information.
Okay, great.
In the board.
And we did speak with Mr. Ngess and Mr. Tarrion on the 16th, is what we're with them.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Mrs. Kucha.
And you would give that information to the board also, the candidates and that kind of stuff, maybe? Yeah, Slackman Hull.
Oh, when will this be posted and how will it be posted to the voters, to the citizens of Dyton?
We will, so tomorrow, geez, tomorrow's the 24th. It will be, the vacancy will be posted tomorrow on our website. Like, it would be posted, like, it would be posted in person and hard copy at Town Hall as well. And it will be posted on our social media, it'll be posted on our social media outlets as well. Like, and what we'll do, we will share the vacancy notice. I will share the vacancy notice with the administration at DR as well. So, I mean, so we'll share, so we'll share the vacancy notice with them. So, like, any additional channels that the school district has, and they want to have that information out, they can do the same.
Slackman Hull.
Who will the applications go to? Clerk's office or your office?
So, they, they will likely go to the Board of Selectmen's office. Like, and we'll have the, and we'll have the information how they can get us, how they can get their applications or their letter of interest really to us. And then once we have them, like, you know, then once we have them, one question I do have, I like actually for the board, do we want to, do we want to have, do we want to have a determinate, determinative, like, application deadline? So, like, we, oh, you know, like, at some, oh, at such and such a point, you know, like, we're closing the applicants and whatever we have goes forward. So, we'll go forward to the school committee and to the Board of Selectmen.
We have enough time for two weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I would suggest maybe March 10th, the Thursday after our Selectmen's meeting on March 9th, that they all be in by March 10th. They can be reviewed and then sent out to the school committee members, as well as the Board of Selectmen. So, we have it at least a couple of days before the.
Oh, yeah, no, that's good.
So, we'll close the, sort of close, close the business on March 10th.
Is that?
Yeah.
Who came with the board?
That's fine with me.
Great.
That gives everyone two weeks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just make a remark about Mr. O'Connor. Sorry, I have an eyelash. I was really sad, obviously, to hear about Mr. O'Connor resigning. But I have gotten to know Tom over the last two or three years since he's been serving on the school committee, as well as his family. And the last thing I think anyone would think Tom is, is a quitter. I will certainly miss the levity that he brings. I certainly, I like to think, I absorb some of it. The way that he thinks politically and really takes the emotion out of it, I really respect that. So, I will certainly miss Tom. I will certainly keep in touch with him and ask him for advice, as I always do, on different things that come up. But we will do our best, Mr. O'Connor, to try to fill your boots the best we can. So, please stay safe.
You know, he was, as you know, he was very active with the school committee. He's a veteran. He's left that and he's gone to some other field, which has kept him very busy. But more importantly, he's made a decision that, that his family came for us, which I, which I truly respect. Not enough people do that. But he just feels he needs to spend more time with his family and that's sad to see him leave, but that's, that's great. I suspect we're going to see him again.
Yeah.
Or maybe you will, maybe I won't, but.
Hopefully, he'll answer the phone.
But he's, he's just a great.
I think he will.
He's just a great person and I can't say enough for him. So, I will entertain a motion to accept.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation letter of Thomas O'Connor with sincere thanks and appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Kim Pacheco is aye. So, again, thank you, Tom O'Connor. Your service to the town and the students in town.
Thank you, Mrs. Kucha.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you. Our next agenda item is review, discuss and act and request from the town clerk to purchase two A-frame signs. I am looking, this is addressed to the Board of Selectmen. I am looking for the Board of Selectmen's support in purchasing two A-frame signs, designed to remind the public on the restrictions of electioneering. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, no other poster, card, handbill, placard, picture or circular intended to influence the action of the voter shall be posted, exhibited, circulated or distributed in a polling place in the building where the polling place is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the building stands, or within one hundred and fifty feet of the building's entrance door to such polling place. In this day and age, it is important to maintain election and town meeting integrity. I think seeing these signs placed in the proximity of the hundred and fifty-foot mark of the polling town meeting location would be a good reminder to all of us. I would use these at both town meetings and town elections. Therefore, I am seeking, I am seeking your approval to split the bill with the town clerk's office. Your share will be a hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Please advise.
I think someone thought the whole bill was coming out of the town clerk's office.
I thought the whole bill would be coming to them. And he's given us some information on the, those billboards. Is there any questions?
I do have a question, actually. So, first of all, I support this. I know I had heard, and it was sort of a chaotic, you know, everything was getting underway. But there were, there was an individual or there were individuals outside of the town meeting back in June. And so, I think that this would help clear up where the distances are and where you have to stand to exercise your, you know, First Amendment, right, right? No one's taking that away. But there are certain rules as to where you have to do it. My specific question, though, is, don't, how is this different from the marker that the town clerk's office has? And I've seen it used on election days that tells you, like, I forget what it says, but it's something, nothing beyond this point. So, you know where that hundred and fifty feet is. How is this different than that?
So, it's actually the same exact thing. We're just, what the town clerk is proposing to do. So, what the town clerk is also proposing to do, like, is supplement that with signs. Really supplement the marker with signs, so that it's spelled out more clearly.
Where are the signs going to be?
To, so it depends if it's at an election.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, or like a town meeting. An election, so like, our elections are, our elections are at the DES. So, they would be, I assume, right outside the hundred, or right inside the hundred and fifty-foot zone.
Okay.
Like, and then at DR, then at DR for the town meeting, they would be.
So, it's just extras of the same thing?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Extra really.
I don't know what an A-frame sign is, so.
So.
Okay.
He did, he did include an example and it was actually really helpful because I was, I mean, there are many different types of A-frame signs. So.
Oh, oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, one of those.
Okay, I totally, yes, I support this. I'm sorry. I thought it was literally the same thing with the little pole and the, that's why I was like, why do we need an extra one of those?
Yeah, no, this is.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Sure.
We talked to them today.
Sure.
One will be placed directly at the hundred and fifty-foot point. And one, the reason for two, the other one will be facing the path they want.
Okay.
I think that they need a marker in that direction as well.
Awesome. Thank you for answering my questions. I totally support this. Thank you, Mrs. Brady.
So I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the, uh, town clerk Mark Pacheco's request to purchase two A-frame signs as presented this evening and that the Board of Selectmen absorb part of the cost in a total of $141.75.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye.
Thank you again, Mrs. Brady.
Uh, the next agenda item is a facility request. It's from, it's not Saint Nicholas of Myrna, it's the Saint Nicholas of Myra.
Can we do that again?
No, no, it says Myra. They actually, they actually filled it out, so. Uh, so they're asking to use the Dayton Town Garage Parking Lot for a car wash in, what is the date? For September 10th, 2022, at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And they're also asking, uh, that the, uh, fee be waived. If you have insurance, if you've seen the paperwork, they have the insurance. I'm going to ask, um, Selectman Hull to recuse himself from voting on this, but you and I can vote on this, uh, because you're a member of, uh, the church.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve, uh, Saint Nicholas of Myra's request, uh, to use facilities as presented this evening and that the Board of Selectmen waive the corresponding fee.
Is there a second? Nope. I'll step down a sec. I'm looking at you, Selectman Hull. I just asked you to recuse yourself. I'll step down a second, that motion. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. You did also say to waive the fee, right?
I did, yes.
So the next two requests, I'm a member of the Dyans Lions Club and I'm also a member of the Dyans.
Are you recusing yourself?
I'm recusing myself and I'm going to turn it over to.
As long as you're being consistent.
I'm going to turn it over to the clerk.
The Dayton Lions Club has requested the use of the Cow Sprat Memorial Field for their annual cow chip festival. I believe the dates of that.
Says June 3rd through the 5th.
June 3rd.
Just make that comment, yeah.
I'm sorry, June 3rd to the 5th. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
I'm just, uh, Selectman Hull, I'm just excited to see that it will be back in its pre-pandemic traditional form. Um, and I look forward to being there.
I don't see any reference to fireworks. Um.
Well, there is fireworks. I'm on the Lions Club. There is fireworks.
There will be, this year too?
There will be fireworks, depending on the weather, but everything's tied in unless you need a permit to go up to you guys' sign off, so to speak.
I'm, I'm just wondering if the fire department has to, okay, that I'm not sure, but.
They would probably need to approve that in some form, but the form itself, the Lions Club did everything they needed to. But if I could just recommend, uh, if I could recommend that the board approve it, that the board approve the request, the contingent.
Fire chief's sign off.
Yeah, like on the fire chief's approval for the, uh, for the fireworks specifically. The fire chief has already signed off on the form.
Yeah.
Uh, like however, but the form doesn't mention fireworks, so as long, so as long as the fire, so as long as the fire chief specifically approves the fireworks and is involved in that, yeah, that would be fine.
At this time, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion.
Mr. Acting Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the Dayton Lion, Lions Club's request to use the Cow Case Sprat Memorial Field as presented this evening, contingent upon receiving correspondence from the fire chief, um, that the fireworks, um, display is fine, is okay, or acceptable.
Can I just interject before you second it? Uh, they've also asked that fees be waived?
And that the, yes, I'm sorry. Mrs. Brady, and that the fees be waived. Thank you.
I stepped down to second the motion. Uh, Dr. Sigoffis?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I also stepped down to vote aye.
I'll abstain.
But if you could have voted, you would have voted aye, right? No, I'm just kidding. We'll move on now.
Trouble, trouble, trouble.
Thank you, um, Mr. Marvel as well.
Thank you. We're really looking forward to it. We've been two years old and, uh, I think the Yachts Festival is coming back too, so, uh, we're really looking forward to getting back, you know.
Can I ask him, if it's okay, um, do you have any information on upcoming times where folks, if they're interested, could purchase tickets for the cow chip part? Are we not allowed to ask that?
She called, you know that.
I have tickets.
Okay.
I have 20 tickets.
Okay.
You want all 20?
No, just, just one. I lose every year.
I know.
Interesting fact, the house always wins, they say.
Right, you make a good point. We've got a meeting tomorrow and we'll figure out where tickets could be purchased.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, we'll put that on Facebook and I'll let you know.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is, is because I know it was a bit of a financial burden for the Lions Club to not be able the last two years to do the full cow chip festival. So I know it's a big, it's a big year and it's a big to-do, um, that it's going to be back in its regular form.
Looking forward to it. We'll get the, uh, Pumpkin Country coming back to play. Contacted her last week. Um, we're trying to get the Woodsmans back, so, uh, I think this year's going to be kind of nice. It's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be well worth it.
Nice.
And, you know, if kids aren't around and you need tickets, I can help you with it.
I gotta sell the tickets.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Dayton Historical Society is requesting the use of the gazebo in the area around the back of the hall for, for vendors for their fifth annual strawberry festival on June 18th, starting at 8:00 AM and ending at 4:00 PM. Should be noted that the Lions Club has given permission to use the gazebo. Uh.
Can I just clarify that, if you don't mind, uh, Selectman Hull? Uh, I've talked to the president of the Dayton Historical Society and they, the Lions, uh, Lions Club did not get permission for the gazebo. They get permission for the pavilion. So it was an error.
Thank you.
That was made. So they're asking, I believe, for the, uh, use of the gazebo in the back of Town Hall for, uh, and property for vendors.
Now, in this motion, are they looking for the use of the gazebo as well?
Yes.
For the pavilion? So it would be the pavilion.
They, they've already got permission from the, uh, the Lions Club to use the pavilion, so that's separate. They don't need town permission for that.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
But the gazebo and property, uh, for the vendors.
Yeah.
This event will include food, entertainment and music. They are als, there will be no alcohol, uh, sold at this event, and they are requesting that the fee for the permit be waived. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Acting Chairman, I motion that we approve, excuse me, I'm on the wrong thing, that we approve the Dayton Historical Society's request as presented this evening and that the Board of Selectmen waive the corresponding fee.
I will step down to second the motion. All those in favor? Dr. Z?
Aye.
Uh, Leonard Hull is also aye.
Campuchico abstains.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is acknowledgements. Uh, we got a, a letter from the, uh, this is actually us sending it to, uh, Mr. Costa, Costa. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dayton would like to thank you for your recent generous donation of, it says a hundred, but it was actually $195 worth of services performed on one of our highway department vehicles. The town has limited resources and when local businesses assist in any way, it makes a huge impact. Thank you again for your generosity, your continued support for the Town of Dayton is truly appreciated.
That's so nice.
I think so.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
And you see the bill.
It really is.
Yeah. You see the expenses and the, uh, how they waived all the, uh, the fee from the invoice.
Wow.
The next agenda i- uh, item under acknowledgement, it's a letter from Sheila New. Uh, it's regarding a donation. We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town account and deposited in the Primetime gift and donation account. Should you have any, uh, questions or any, uh, need additional information, please do not hesitate to call. So entertain a motion to accept this donation.
So moved with thanks and appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second?
Uh, any discussion?
No, thank you.
If not, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Dr. Z?
Aye.
Campuchico is an aye and Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next, uh, agenda item under correspondence is a letter from, uh, Chief McGee, uh, Chief of the Fire Department, dated February 8th. Dear Board, it is with great honor and pride I am writing this letter to inform you that effective on February 27, 2022, I am promoting the following personnel to the following ranks within the Fire Department. Full-time firefighter Alexander Green to lieutenant, full-time fi- firefighter Eric Gagnon to lieutenant. These personnel bring a great deal of experience, knowledge and training to these positions. The service they provide to the, this department is an asset to this town and to me. I look forward to continuing to work with these fine personnel in the future. Please join me in congratulating these dedicated members of the Fire Department. Well, congratulations and I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the, uh, this notification.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we acknowledge the promotions of Alexander Green and Eric Gagnon to fire lieutenant as presented this evening.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say I, um, was really happy to hear about this and I sent Chief McGee a text message and just said that I was really, really thought they were good choi, not that I get a say in it, obviously, but, um, that I thought they were really good choices. I've gotten to know, um, Lieutenant Gagnon over the last few years, and I believe he came from Fall River Fire. Um, so he brought, uh, brings a real unique perspective, um, to Dayton firefighting, so I was really happy to see that. He's very dedicated, both, um, you know, in the, in the firehouse, but also outside, and he takes his job very seriously and takes, you know, fitness and all that very seriously. Um, Lieutenant Green, um, also very dedicated, also, um, uses the tuition reimbursement program, um, and took advantage of that to, um, sort of further his fire services career. So both individuals take their jobs very seriously. Obviously, Chief McGee sees that or saw that, um, and I really just want to congratulate them. Um, but also, um, again, Chief McGee doing, um, another great job managing the Fire Department. So I wanted to congratulate all and say everybody's doing a good job.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next agenda item is the appointment of one new full-time firefighter paramedic. Dear Board, this is also from Chief McGee. It is with great honor, I am writing to inform you that effective on March 1st, 2022, I am appointing Ms. Sarah Gilmet as a new full-time firefighter paramedic to the Fire Department. Sarah has successfully completed all of her pre-employment requirements. Sarah is a nationally registered paramedic and certified by the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy and Firefighting 1 slash 2. I would also like to mention that Sarah is the first female full-time firefighter paramedic hired by this department, which is great to hear. This is a very exciting moment for our department. Please join my department and, and I in congratulating Ms. Gilmet in her appointment. We look forward to working with her. Also, I would like to say a big thank you to the firefighter param- paramedic Tyler Nicolin, Nicolin?
Mm-hmm.
Local 4332 president, Deputy Chief Steve Ponce and Town Minister Mike, Mike Mullin for their assistance in the interview process. Without them, the process would not have been completed in such a timely manner. Thank you, Tyler, Deputy Ponce and Administrator Mullin. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Such a big deal.
It is.
It is.
Wow. Congratulations.
Yep. We are moving forward.
Yeah.
Dayton's moving forward.
Absolutely.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sarah Gilmet as a new full-time firefighter and paramedic to the Dayton Fire Department.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Another letter from Chief McGee. Dear Board, I am writing this letter to inform you that effective on March 1st, 2022, I will be appointing one new member to the Call Paramedic Firefighters Rank. This new member, name is John Borgault.
Borgo.
Borgo.
It's French.
I know. It, um, a quarter French, I should know.
You don't pronounce half the letters, you know that.
Someone who lived in France. Uh, any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. And it's, obviously it's from Chief McGee. So I'll also entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that, uh, we acknowledge the appointment of, uh, new Call Paramedic firefighter, John Borgo Jr.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
Congrats.
If not, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Minutes, approval of the minutes of, from the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of January 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. I'll entertain a motion for the, for the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of February 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated February 16th, 2022, 33A dash 22 in the amount of $97,931.66, 33B dash 22 in the amount of $156,875.69, and 33C dash 22 in the amount of $1,548.10.
Second?
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated February 23rd, 2022, 34A dash 22 in the amount of $106,226.92, 34B dash 22 in the amount of $20,613.73, and 34C dash 22 in the amount of $260,059.8.
Is there a second?
Second?
Call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Public input, is there any public input? I think everybody's left on Zoom. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Nope. I saw Dave stand up, I thought maybe. No, no public input. So we will be going into executive session. Uh, we will not be returning, uh, to the meeting. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session pers, uh, under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, numbers 2, 3 and 7. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Board of Selectmen Executive Assistant and Administrative Assistant. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
I declare.
Dayton Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 4332, and Dayton Highway Department Workers, Local 1701. And number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid require, grant in aid requirements, executive session minutes. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of February 9th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second?
Call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?[1753.02]